Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting, today, Monday, August 26, 2024. Tonight, the board met an executive session at 5:00 PM at James Caldwell High School, Room 105. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Tonight, the regular public monthly meeting is taking place right now at 6:03 PM here in the James Caldwell High School cafeteria. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live, but all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person. The Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting is also in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office located in the Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and the township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Ms. DiMartini?
Here.
Ms. Lindofi-Jefferson?
Here.
Ms. Mack?
Here.
Mr. D'ambola?
Here.
Ms. Grosso?
Here.
We have five members present, no absences, we have a forum.
Great, can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are there any communications for the board this evening?
Actually, yes, I understand that today is Mr. D'ambola's birthday.
Oh, my goodness, is it really? Can we all give a rousing happy birthday to Mr. D'ambola? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chris. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
This is a dedicated public servant here on his birthday, they didn't even try to get out of it. So, Chris, thank you, happy birthday. Okay, so, we're now going to move on to the superintendent's report, which is why we're all here. Thank you all for being here this evening. Dr. Conklin?
I'd like to introduce Greg Samjin from the Architects, who are leading the referendum, who's going to give us a quick presentation about what the plans are.
Okay. Is this on? We're good? Okay, I guess we're good. So, good evening, my name is Greg Samjin, I am with Parret, Samjin, and Architects. We have been working with the district for the last several months. We were brought in to help them analyze a variety of projects that were being considered, and based on the size of the projects and a few other reasons, the district is going to be presenting to the community a vote for these projects in March of 2025. So, why now? So, there were a couple of reasons why the district is pursuing a referendum in March. First is there's debt rolling off. So, the taxpayers are paying for projects from decades ago, and similar to a house payment, the last payment is coming due, and if they present and successfully pass the March 2025 referendum, there will be a no-tax impact on the infrastructure projects that I will present to you this evening, which means your taxes will not go up, but the district has the ability now to undertake much-needed projects. The second reason is that the state is offering debt service aid, which means that the state has a program in place, they've had it in place since 2000, where they are subsidizing eligible projects. Unbeknownst to you, for decades, a portion of your taxes that are paid to the state of New Jersey are going into this fund to pay for the other districts that have taken advantage of this. So, now it's time for your district to benefit from that and to bring some money back into the local district. And as I mentioned, because of the debt rolling off, there will be no tax impact on the infrastructure projects. So, what are the infrastructure projects? So, at the high school, there is going to be a few projects, including the introduction of a new security vestibule at the main entrance, the woodshop and the computer lab area is going to be renovated to modernize it for not just the woodshop and computers, but into more of a steam-type space, and then we're also contemplating adding air conditioning to the gymnasium and the adjacent space. So, that will result in new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment. At the middle school, we're going to do a vestibule upgrade. So, there's already a vestibule, but there are a few things that the district would like to add, some cameras and some other minor things. There are some repairs that are going to be proposed to the front stairs, to the brick facade that needs some repointing and has some cracking brick, and then the fire escape, which needs attention and replacement. There's also a major project within the school, and that is the replacement of the decades-old supply-and-return heating pipes that provide heat throughout the building. Over time, every material has a life expectancy, and in this case, the replacement of those pipes to prevent the system from going completely down is contemplated. Here again, we're looking at adding air conditioning to the gym, which would result in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements. At the elementary school, Jefferson in particular, again, we're looking at some miscellaneous vestibule upgrades, and we're looking to create an elementary school steam space so that the kids at the elementary school level start to get exposed to the various steam-type programs. The middle school already has a steam space, and then the high school would now have the most modern transitioning students into college or into the real world. At Lincoln Elementary School, there's going to be a new security vestibule incorporated that does not exist now. The main office and the classroom that are adjacent to the proposed area for the vestibule, we're in the process of looking at switching those so that the main entrance can be adjacent to the new vestibule. For those of you that are familiar, the school has steps towards the front, so making a vestibule in that hallway is a little difficult, so we had to be creative and find a different location for it. Like the other elementary schools, the media center portion of it will be upgraded to accommodate steam, and then there are some flooring replacements and some, again, facade repairs that are going to be undertaken at this building. Some of the floors is rotting, there is asbestos that is underneath that will be abated, and so that repair work will be undertaken. And again, there's some miscellaneous pipe replacement and foundation repair work within the boiler room. At Washington Elementary School, it's going to be limited to some upgrades at the security vestibule and the steam so that each of the elementary schools will have the same type of elementary school steam space. And then at Wilson, again, some upgrades, including a new security vestibule, and the media center, again, will mimic the other elementary schools so that there is consistency between the elementaries. We shared some imageries from some other projects that we've been talking with the district about during the design planning. These are some high school media centers, and in the low right-hand corner, an example of an elementary school space that we've designed for other districts, and this is just intended to give everyone a vision of what the spaces might be on the elementary school level. They're going to be very simple, they're going to provide some 3D printer and some vinyl cutters and some colorful spaces, while at the high school, the incorporation of the woodshop and robotics and things like that will be incorporated into the design. So, the infrastructure projects that were just discussed are going to be presented to the community as question one, and question one, again, will have no tax impact to the community. So, basically, we're transitioning debt that is rolling off, so you will see no change in the tax, and these projects will all get to be undertaken based on the debt rolling off and the debt service aid that we're getting from the state. During the planning process, the district said, well, if we're going to go to the community and we're going to... Uh-oh, wasn't me.
Uh-oh.
All right, well, we'll go with one screen, we'll adapt. So, since we're going to present to the community a question in order to be able to replace the debt with what we have rolling off, why don't we also present them something that is very... Many people are very interested in and is needed in some respects as well, and that is the fieldhouse. So, I believe that there's going to be a tour of the fieldhouse after this meeting?
Yes, the fieldhouse will be open until 8:00 PM, so when we're done here, if you have no more questions for the architect, there will be a question and answer session. You're welcome to go up to the fieldhouse and take a tour of it.
Yeah, so if you've not been to the fieldhouse, it's old. It has two single-fикер public restrooms, so if you've ever been to a game, a graduation, and stood in line for the bathroom, you'll know what I'm talking about. And so, the goal here is not just to modernize the building for the student athletes, but it's also to be able to add to the women's side so that Title IX compliance is met, and to add to the public restrooms so that you have multi-fикшер's and that the community that's using this facility are using modern фикшер's and not necessarily waiting in line for one фикшер. It also has a second floor that I'll touch on in a second, that there is a public space that will be used not just for athletics, but also for testing, for professional development, and the like. So, what you see before you is an aerial, not a view that typically people are accustomed to seeing. The field and the track are probably the most notable as a point of reference, and then in the right-hand corner of the track, you see the existing fieldhouse, which has a footprint of about 3,000 square feet. You'll see just in front of it, there is a discus area and a shot put area, there's a practice field behind the bleachers, and then a softball field in the lower left-hand corner. The proposal is to pull... To raise the existing building, in other words, knock the building down, and then pull the building back from the track a little bit to give a little bit of space for circulation and for access, ingress, egress. The blue represents the footprint of the new building. By comparison, if you look at the red dotted line, that is the footprint of the old fieldhouse. The green area is a rain garden that is a fancy word for stormwater management that is required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection because we are increasing the footprint of the building and the impervious surfaces, and so we need to manage stormwater. We'd have to relocate the shot put area to accommodate this project. We have about six parking spaces, and then the gray area around the building are basically sidewalks and some common areas that people can access the restrooms, can access the fieldhouse, and can go in and out of that general area. So, the plans for the fieldhouse look something like this. On the left-hand side is the first floor, on the right-hand side is the second floor. On the left-hand side, the blue represents the team rooms. So, there is a men's side that has a primary team room and a secondary team room. Directly off of that men's team room, you have a restroom for the athletes, and then you have a coaches' area just below that, and that makes up the men's side. As we transition down the screen, the large yellow area in the middle are the men's and women's public restrooms. They are designed such that you would enter from the left, which is the main entrance, you would be able to have a line that uses the restrooms, and then we can exit people out the back of the building so that people aren't necessarily trying to backtrack and get out what are typically narrower doors and a more challenging circulation. And then when we come to the bottom of the floor plan, we have a mirrored space for the female athletes. So, this brings us to Title IX compliance, it brings us to accommodations for the public restrooms, it brings us to ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, compliance. The white spaces in the front are basically utilitarian circulation. They consist of a circulation hallway, an elevator, a fire stair, some utility spaces that are going to house electrical panels and equipment machine room for the elevator. Then, as you come down towards 7:00 on the first floor plan, you'll see a green area that is going to be a remote trainers' area so that for the athletes that are on the fields, there is an area there where the trainer can set up and be able to support those athletes. It is not replacing the trainers' room here at the high school because, obviously, we have winter sports here at the high school as well, and student athletes may need access during the day, but this was part of the program to supplement what exists today in the high school. As we go up to the second floor, the large green area is a multipurpose room space. It can accommodate two wrestling mats, it has a partition that allows the space to be divided, it's going to be used for professional development by the high school or the district as a whole, it can be used for a meeting space, and so the space is truly multipurpose and can allow for a variety of flexibility. The purple area is a conference room for approximately 20 people. It's adjacent to a single-fикер bathroom, so not... Everyone has to go downstairs just to use the restroom. And then the yellow is representative of storage. So, storage has always been a concern in every district that we've ever worked in, your district is no different. In this case, the storage is used for out-of-season athletics, uniforms, and the like. It's also going to house tables and chairs that can be used inside the multipurpose room. And then, again, you see the circulation in white, which includes two means of egress, the elevator and some of the lobby space. So, this is an image that we created to represent what we think the building could look like. It's not finalized in so much as we have some flexibility, but so far, the presentation that's been made to the board, aesthetically, this seems to be very much in keeping what they would love to see. Again, you can see the use of materials, we're trying to break the building down a little bit, being cognizant of the residential neighborhood that surrounds the school. It will include a fully modern building with all the modern amenities that will be energy-efficient. So, let's talk about finances. So, question one will be presented, and as I mentioned, it'll have no tax impact. Because of a few factors, it's a little bit convoluted, and so rather than trying to put it up on a screen, we need to wait for some numbers to be finalized, but generally speaking, the first question is going to be somewhere in the range of $21 to $23 million in total. The district is getting debt service aid for that, I think we're going to be somewhere in the range of $6 to $7 million because the projects in question one are mostly eligible for debt service aid, and then the district has capital reserve that they've been saving and are going to contribute that. So, question number one, that will be borrowed for a long term, meaning 20 years, should total about $17.9 million, and that $17.9 million represents the zero-tax impact. Now, there are still things that have to happen, and so by way of example, our applications are due in the middle of September. Once our applications are submitted, the Department of Education will review these projects and ultimately will analyze what is eligible and what is not. We expect them to come back with the numbers that we just shared with you, and we will get something called a preliminary eligible cost letter, or a PEC. The district will accept that PEC, we will get a FEC or a final eligible cost letter, and then the financial advisor that is working with the district that ran these preliminary numbers can confirm everything I just shared with you because then we'll have the final information from the state. But right now, based on what we know, based on our experience in doing these kinds of projects, the numbers I just shared with you for question one are reasonably accurate. We still have some adjustments based on what the state is going to respond to us, and ultimately, the goal is, even if a project here or there has to be adjusted and the capital reserve contribution is up or down a couple of dollars, the goal is that question number one will have no tax impact to the taxpayer. As I mentioned earlier, because there's a presentation being made to the community, there was a decision to add a second question, and that second question has to do with the fieldhouse. Right now, the second question, we're still waiting for some test results on the environmental to make sure nothing has to be abated in the building, some geotechnical, which are the soil conditions, but right now, the fieldhouse is estimated to be about $15 or $16 million total. That's all in, that's the hard costs, which are construction, that includes contingencies, and I'll talk about timeline in a second, but the state requires us to carry contingencies because things come up during construction. If you've ever experienced a construction project and it's gone perfectly, I would like to meet you after this meeting. For those of you that have experienced the typical construction, there are always things that come up, whether it's a material issue or an unforeseen condition. So, right now, we're pretty comfortable that our budget of $15, $16 million will be refined based on we get some of the test results and some of the other things back that we need, and the district has committed to approximately $2 million from capital reserve to subsidize the fieldhouse project. We do not expect the fieldhouse project to be eligible for any debt service aid. They may surprise us, I don't know, but we're going in with the most conservative approach, and we're presuming that we're not getting any debt service aid, and if we get anything, it'll just further reduce the impact. But the $140 on the annual... A $140 annual investment is based on the average assessed home, based on the numbers that I just shared with you, along with the contribution from the capital reserve. Our goal is to get that down a little bit, but really, from a planning perspective, we're using that as the upset number for the purposes of planning. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I am told, so long as you're all nice to me, I will answer as many questions as you'd like. Yes, sir? Do you want the microphone? Yeah? Right there, the gentleman on the aisle.
May I ask a question that's not about the money, just about fieldhouse?
You can ask me any questions you'd like, and if I can answer them, I will.
Okay, hello.
Hi.
It sounds wonderful. And so, the fieldhouses for student athletes, you think it looks like when I go to the gym and there's like a water station or something to get water, fill your water bottle with, or something like that?
There are, there's a mandate, it's part of the plumbing code, so we have two drinking fountains that are on the downstairs section, and I think we added one drinking fountain on the upstairs.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
I'm going to take you on the road. If that's the question you have for me, you're coming everywhere I go.
Not every student has access to clean water or bottled water all the time, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
The gentleman in the aisle, Dr. Conklin.
So, the...
They're recording.
Sorry. Sure. So, this presentation, there's two separate questions, why not consider adding a question or reduce the amount?
So, it won't be a reduced amount because the math still works out the math, and I think the district, and I don't want to speak for them, but I'll answer it, but I think the goal was that if you lump them together and the question fails, then the district loses the debt rolling off, and from a risk factor, I think their position was, the first question are much-needed and it doesn't cost us anything. If the pipes at the middle school fail, the school will not have heat. So, the board's position, as I understood it, was, look, the first question should be a no-brainer because there's no tax impact, and the second question, while they all believe it's worthwhile, the community has to decide whether they want to support it. So, lumping them together would potentially either risk or not risk, and that was, from a tactical perspective, the decision that they chose.
Can you just call it loud and clear, because we have to be on the field.
I... So, I have a lot of questions. So, the first thing is, for James Caldwell High School, you mentioned contemplating HVAC upgrades, does that mean we're not... It's not truly in the budget?
So, it's... So, the HVAC, just to be more clear, the mechanical proposal is for the gym, adding air conditioning, and by virtue of adding air conditioning, we're going to be replacing the existing heating system. So, the gym and some of the adjacent spaces, as part of this application to the state, are going to be included for new air conditioning and new heating. The district still has the option, after we get all these applications back from the Department of Ed, there's no obligation to take any of these projects to referendum. So, I think the board wants to see how much debt service aid we're going to get, tactically figure out, okay, everything planned exactly the way we did, let's make sure that we present everything to the district. But right now, we're in the phase of, yes, it's included in the application to the state. If the district, after they get the PEC letters and FEC letters, say, Greg, it worked out exactly as you had anticipated it will, we want to present that whole bundle to the community, then it will be.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, for all of the schools, with the exception of GCMS, it sounds like there's going to be additional renovations and/or net new steam labs.
Correct.
So, at GCMS, they have two different STEM labs with rooms right now. One is, I guess, like up to par, and the other one kind of isn't, but I didn't see that mentioned under question one, is that no longer...
So, there was... So, the guidance we were given was, the middle school has STEM spaces, so we're not going to focus the limited amount of monies that we have available that are eligible because we do cap out the debt rolling off. So, arguably, if we were to add any more projects, now there would be a tax impact. So, because the middle school had the spaces, we were told, that's not an area to focus, focus on the high school, which is the last transition between college or the real world, and let's give the little kids something, a flavor of what they can experience as they go up through the schools.
Okay. So, then, my next question is, you mentioned that there was going to be a $2 million capital reserve contribution to question two, to the fieldhouse. How much is the capital reserve contribution for question one?
About $6 million.
Okay. Great. And then... Okay, last question, sorry. Is, so initially, when this was going around for referendum, there was the space that the athletes currently use within the school here, was mentioned that that would be torn down, but that's no longer the case?
So, let's...
It's going to be like new classrooms within the space?
So, let's be clear. The... Let me clarify what I know, and then someone can correct me if I'm misspeaking.
Sure.
Right now, the auxiliary gym is used by wrestling. So, the mats go down, and that limits that space to other uses. By moving the wrestling into the multipurpose room, it'll free up the auxiliary gym for other uses within the high school. So, the only thing being knocked down or raised is the old fieldhouse. Within the high school, we're not knocking down anything except that we're gutting the woodshop area to make it a modernized steam lab. So, I think what was being communicated in your question from the outside world was probably that by being able to find a new home, there's space freed up for other things within the high school that can't happen now because one group of athletes is using it.
But not academically, not for academic purposes?
Well, the space in question is an auxiliary gym, so other than maybe using it for lunch because you have a block lunch or doing testing in there, which might be an educational use, but again, right now, the auxiliary gym is not air-conditioned, correct?
No.
So, part of the goal is, by having the new fieldhouse with the second-floor air condition, the principal is very excited to be able to do testing with the kids out there in an air-conditioned space. So, it's within the educational umbrella of the high school, but... And physical education is technically part of education, but to me, when you say educational, I think of math, English, and those kinds of spaces, and the auxiliary gym is not being used like that now.
Greg, can I just jump into Liz?
Please.
So, I think I know too what you're referring to. So, initially, when we had the first architect on the project, the board's goal was, oh, well, the weight room is here, we should just move the weight room to the fieldhouse and build a field... And that was clearly not what the administration of the high school wanted, okay? So, the administration of the high school gathered together and they said, listen, what we want is, the weight room's great here, we don't want the weight room moved. We want to take our existing science lab, which is two woodshops, one that's active, one that's not active, but they are an existing and just dormant, this huge computer lab, and we want to blow it, like open it, gut the whole thing and make it like a complete science steam wing of the high school, right? So, that's when Greg was brought on board and was awesome about really taking what they wanted into consideration, and so we have listened to Mr. Devlin and the teachers. So, that's why the plans have shifted, right? That's what's happened here.
Okay.
Because I think that's where you were going, because that's when we were talking about it months and months ago, because that was before we brought Greg on the project, and Mr. Devlin and the teachers really had, thanks to Greg, like a real seat at the table and a voice as to what they really wanted, how they felt educationally they could move the high school forward the best.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. My question, I'm not sure if you're actually able to answer, or someone on the board is... And so, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought in our last referendum, one of the major things that it was supposed to have was those security vestibules. I thought it was security vestibules, it was bulletproof classroom doors, it was all the cameras and a lot that's now in our question one again. So, my question is, to that, I know not every building did have a security vestibule, so we know that that didn't happen fully. I don't know if that was the plan fully, if this is different in some way, or how this is upgrading those, is there... Can you speak to that, or is this...
Yeah, so I was not part of the last referendum, so unfortunately, I cannot speak to that.
Yeah, unfortunately, Madeline, none of us were part of it. So, we can definitely ask Brian to look back at that, but no one on this board was part of that referendum, so we cannot say.
And I understand that, but so, there's no record of what was supposed to be done and what is yet done?
We can look... We can totally look into that for you, we just can't answer you this evening. But what I would suggest you do is email Dr. Conklin and Brian so that they can go through the archives and get that information for you.
And I understand this is, you know, a no-brainer, and I agree, but I think we also need to really do our due diligence so we're not just spinning our wheels and doing a boating on the same things over and over.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Listen, absolutely, and just so everybody knows, the purpose of this tonight is, we're cluing everybody in on where we are now. So, I cannot speak for how boards before us operated, but we have always pledged to the community that we will be transparent with everyone. We were transparent when we fired the old architect and brought Greg on. We're being transparent tonight that everything you're seeing there is all the knowledge we have. We don't have any more concrete numbers for you, everything that you are saying is what we have. And our goal is, as we go through this process, Greg will be around, he's going to be coming to more meetings, as we get more... We're going to have a whole page on the website dedicated to the referendum updates. Our goal is to constantly communicate so we can absolutely get you that information, it's just that none of us can answer for it, but we will get it for you, it's absolutely important, and you should hold us to task, that's what we're elected here. That's what we're elected here today, right? So it's important. So please email Brian and Dr. Conklin.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the details, show of mind of the whole. Couple of questions. You mentioned timeline, and so I'll bring the other questions I have. When is construction, assuming all things moving forward, expected to be done?
So we haven't worked that out completely yet, but what I can say to you is, with a March of 2025 successful referendum, April 1st, plus or minus, we would hit the ground running, right? The bonding company, excuse me, the lawyer and the financial advisor would start bidding the monies. We would be authorized to start developing detailed drawings because, just by way of background, the Department of Education requires some level of detail in the drawings, but they don't want the district to commit all of the finances necessary to develop a full set of drawings and get that. And then have a failed referendum and have nothing to show for it. So the state requires some stuff, but they wanna minimize the investment. So if April 1 is our kind of start date after the referendum, we probably need four to six months to develop the detailed drawings. Then we have to bid the project. There are timelines within the bidding. This is for the fieldhouse in particular. The other infrastructure projects can overlap. You're not gonna see any construction in the summer of 2025. Depending on conversations with the coaches, we're gonna try to manage this so maybe we start after, you know, the fall season so that we only impact one season for each group because then you won't have a fieldhouse for the spring, and you may not have a fieldhouse for the following fall, but then each group of athletes is only impacted once. So plus or minus, that's the approach that will be taken. Plus or minus four to six months for the drawings, and then bidding, and then, you know, maybe six to 12 months for construction with different phases going on at the same time?
Right, so we're looking at 2026, roughly, construction start?
Uh, most likely.
Let's just call it for argument's sake. How does that impact a fieldhouse or no fieldhouse? Most boards here don't use the fieldhouse, basically.
Yep.
The women's teams don't use that.
Right.
Right, so the impact immediately is really on the boys and all, I don't know, for us. Let's just call it what it is. My question around that impact is, from a construction perspective, what can be done? Because construction permits in a building are generally the helpless. How is that going to be abated in a way for the students that are still practicing, playing, or otherwise on a field? And will it impact taxes?
So if I understand your question correctly, post-referendum, before we knock down the building, and we don't have all the test results in yet, but I'm led to believe what exists there, from what we understand, is not the worst kind of stuff you would expect to see. But there's still gonna be some abatement that needs to be made. So that abatement would happen. Maybe it would happen over the summer of 2025, when there are no athletes around, because that could arguably be done. Have the building ready to be razed, and then basically, you know, within a day, that building would be gone, and then getting all the debris off the site would take a couple of weeks. So if I understood your question correctly, it should have no impact to any of the athletes in and around on the practice fields or on the game fields when that happens.
No, that's just fair to you for that. And I'm just thinking, I've got a next question on this is, we're talking about facilities and security, et cetera, at men's schools, which is great, a child or a men's school, or a high school, both happening. From a security perspective in that building, is it monitored the entire time it's open? But now, again, you're implying a different requirement?
Yep.
We stand point of who's accessing it, and women, and of course, our children. So how is that going to work, based on security in that building every minute it's open?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I can't... Yeah, I don't know that I can answer that. What I can tell you is that typically, in modern buildings, we have the benefit of putting cameras in because the wiring can be placed. We have the ability to put key fobs and things like that, and things are set up so that they can be more secure. But to your point, you have a remote building, and so the adults that are gonna be monitoring it, just like they do with the fieldhouse today, are gonna have to have some protocols set in place, maybe policies by the board to set up what that looks like.
Right, what I would like to say is, someone, like a community center, you should have, someone have a front desk, the entire town is open, both directions. Not just one at the middle and us at the head down. Right, so something that we can consider, like how that's sorted out, that for the safety of our own kids.
Yep.
Not just for those who can't read, but those who could.
Yep, that's more of an operational issue, obviously.
Just, boards here, it's recorded, just as an awareness perspective.
Perfect.
I'd like to say that.
Sean, I think it's a really great point you're making, and I think like the goal right now is, let's build the building, like let's pass it. And then, when it comes to that point, to have community members, like, there'll be like a special meeting for us, for people to come to the table, right? Everyone who has a seat at the table to share opinions just like this and help us come up with some sort of protocols, procedures. And to your point, Greg's point, a policy. You know, I think it's definitely gonna need a board policy. So, yeah, thank you for bringing it up. Really good. I've jotted that down, something like, we're so into the nitty-gritty here of like the numbers and the building and the stress of it all. Like, that's like post-referendum, but very, very valid and important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will Caldwell College be using that fieldhouse if somebody is chipping in towards the project?
Um, we have not had any conversations with Caldwell College right now.
Right, so when they have their football games, then they won't be using that fieldhouse?
I mean...
Do they still have the spread football on our field like that, or no?
They do, they do. Have they, we have usage of facilities from Caldwell University for this year, right?
The fields, but there's been no plans or talk about using the fieldhouse.
Right, if they did use the fieldhouse, if they started to use the fieldhouse, would we be compensated by the college for their usage?
Brian, do they currently use the fieldhouse?
The fields, they rent the fields.
But they don't use the fieldhouse?
I don't think they use the fieldhouse.
So I think like from a board perspective, that's the way we would continue our relationship with them. But to your point, if they wanted to open up a conversation and the district could benefit from it as a revenue source, but right now, to be truthful with everybody, this fieldhouse is for our kids, right? The field, yeah, the field space is open space. Fields are hard to come by. We love and appreciate Caldwell University and their contributions to the community. But the fieldhouse itself is being built for the student athletes of this community, right? Yeah, but thank you, it's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah, can I call Caldwell? As far as the estimates you got on the builds, or the fieldhouse, did you go to figure out the cost, the union, labor? And if not, do you anticipate any issues with the unions? Because at that dollar amount, there's a threshold that they start to go after and aware of that.
Yeah, so the answer to your question is that all public projects that are built and bid in the state of New Jersey are prevailing wage. And so just to clarify for those that don't understand, union is an organization, and they pay prevailing wage. Non-union contractors are still permitted to bid public work, but they too have to pay the same rates that someone from the union does. So either way, you're spending the same amount prevailing wage rates to build this building. The, I can't, I can't tell you which contractor's gonna choose to build this because ultimately, the process is, post-referendum, we do the drawings, we put a publication in the newspaper that says, we have this project. Contractors that are pre-qualified and meet the criteria, whether it's general construction and/or have the uncompleted contract, meaning each contract in the state of New Jersey has a pre-qualification limit. So I said this is a $15, $16 million project. A contractor who's only pre-qualified for $10 million cannot bid on this project. A contractor who is $100 million pre-qualification but has $95 million outstanding can't bid on this project. So the state governs the bidding process. To answer your question directly, everyone that bids the process has to be paying prevailing wage. Whether they're union or non-union, I won't know. And again, so long as you're paying prevailing wage, you're meeting the state requirements. To your point, yes. Sometimes, if the unions are slow, and they see that there's a project being built by a non-union carpenter, they will try to negotiate to get some trades on there that are union, but the dollar amounts are gonna be exactly the same.
Hi.
Hi.
I love the fieldhouse.
Thank you.
I have a very important question.
Oh, God.
How are you...
Can I say it this way? Your line is gonna be much less than it is today because you're sharing one fixture bathroom. So...
You did, or I'm a whore.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you. And you could probably make a few dollars if you took a few people with you. So there is a plumbing code that we have to comply with, and we have to take into consideration not just the usage of the fieldhouse, but the bleachers, because the stadiums have a calculation that we have to run. So I can tell you, I'm not gonna see you from back here, though. One, two, three, four. So there are five inside, plus the family bathroom, that's six, plus the one upstairs, which is seven. So there are seven fixtures. Listen, it's not gonna alleviate 300 people waiting in line. It's not. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be much cleaner, much safer, and the lines will go through much more quickly. It complies with the code, and as you can appreciate, oftentimes, we will look to possibly add fixtures when we can, but we're also trying to manage the square footage of the building because that adds cost. So this meets the code. The goal is to ultimately make it more convenient for the community members, such as yourselves, who are paying the tax. Kids are great, don't get me wrong. I got three. But last time I checked, when I was in college, they kept telling me my kid's an adult, and yet they kept looking for me for the check. So, you know, that's something that we need to recognize in balancing these two pieces.
I do have a second question, probably directed towards the board and in conjunction with question one. As I love the idea of upgrading, you know, the security vestibule that I saw along with the woodshop because I'm an advocate for trades. So in conjunction with trades, is there any future plan in terms of the high school and curriculum to expand educating our youngsters in trade, such as electrical, plumbing, HVAC? As some students do not go to college afterwards. And I know, you know, we all kinda maybe, you know, grew up in different times.
Yeah.
You know, I had a chemical school as an option.
Yeah.
For those that didn't. So as we're putting in votes and plans for the future, does the board have any plans to impress those students that don't go to college?
I mean, I can obviously defer to Dr. Conklin for that, but I will just say, Kath, that like if the referendum passes, right, that whole renovated wing, that's gonna be part of Mr. Devlin's charge here, like with the teachers, right? That's gonna be a whole separate curriculum. He's very well aware of that, as are the teachers. So the roundabout answer to your question is yes, right? It's got to allot for that. That's the whole purpose of doing all of this, so yes.
I have one final one.
Yeah, good, and this is the time, so we have to just be patient with each other, get it out, yeah.
It may seem a little silly, as I'm a little type, I have OCD. As far as the high school's concerned, only because my daughter brought it up to my attention, and just to go back to the fieldhouse, I love that you're building an actual locker room for the females. Is, I noticed that the accent color here is green throughout the building and outside. Again, silly little question, but our colors are blue and white. So are there any funds allocated?
You go by your own broker.
Are there any changes needed to maybe change the color of the school and make it feel more unified to the new fieldhouse in conjunction to the other schools and, you know, go big look?
I don't know, I don't disagree. Not right...
We go back to...
Yeah, yeah. Kath, I'm speechless, which is hard to do to me, we all know that, so... Do you mind? Do you mind? I'm sorry.
Uh, excellent. Forty-five Holiday Drive. My question is, have you looked at alternatives? As far as location, as far as incorporating concession stand, or, you know, we've been to a lot of different districts, and there's a lot of different configurations. Something more in proximity to the high school, or not so far away? I just wanted to look at any other alternative plans. Because I'm a big, you know, we go this way, but we're doing something that's big.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're doing something that's big, and it's gonna be here for the next 50 years, you know, we better make sure that we spend our money wisely
Yeah.
and look at every other alternative before, you know, we allocate, you know, to break ground and do this for the next, you know, it'll be here for the next 50 years.
Yeah.
So I can tell you this. All but briefly, we did look at a couple of other options because when we were brought on board, it was a little bit later than we would normally be brought on board, and we identified the same thing you did, which is, you know, this is on the other side of the field. The realities are that we looked at the area across the street by the baseball field. There's a big open field there. We contemplated, again, all but very briefly, the big steep hill here where the steps are. At the end of the day, the board was very conscious, and I have to commend them because we work with a lot of boards, and this board was conscientious about meeting all the objectives, but also being financially responsible when it comes to the community. We have electric there, we have sewer there, we have water there, we have stormwater there. That alone, to bring something to a different spot, would add a significant amount of money to the project. And so, not to mention that if we moved it, the stormwater regulations, we'd have to find a spot for that little rain garden that you saw in my design. You also have some limitations, whether you know this or not. You have a small wetlands pocket, which we did research, up on this end of the softball... Up in the left side of my screen, you have some wetlands that require buffers. So the fact that we were far away from it took the DEP right out of the equation, which was huge. Otherwise, we'd be talking about a 2027, 2028 project by the time we got through DEP. You also have something called historic fill. The field that is there was not a level area when it started life. They brought in fill, the Army Corps of Engineers, I'm led to believe, and so that's why you have that huge hill. So the direct answer to your question is, for a brief moment, we did look at it because we too saw that as not necessarily the ideal thing if we were starting from scratch, but we came full circle financially and for convenience and a host of other issues that that is really the right place for it. Thank you.
I know that a little over here had a question in reference to having classes for students that, you know, have a trade. I know years ago, when I was 19 years old, I attended the VOTEC school here. This day, Gavin, you took a whole body of repair class. Couldn't our students attend that during the day? But the electrical class, HVAC?
Go ahead, Doctor Conklin.
We actually have a full-time department, too, that go to VOTEC for HVAC. Or, uh, uh, mixing and pouring, or something. So yes, we actually have a place with that, so I'm just gonna have to pull daily. So that's really how we do those things, but we wanna start incorporating some of that technology here even in engineering classes.
Okay. So I'm fine with the upgrade of the building. My question is, I think the town needs a lot of upgrades, to be honest with you. The fields are, this doesn't really go to you.
Perfect.
The fields are, the fields in this town are horrible. And they need upgrading very badly. It's pretty sad when you have other towns in the area come to this town, and they're on our fields. So the question I had is, I know you said this building's roughly $15 million, but if you got a performance loan from a bank, do you have to build this building prevailing wage?
Yes.
Even with a performance loan from the bank?
Yeah, so the only way that the district can borrow money is to bond it. The only way to bond the money is to get the voter's approval. The only way to get the voter's, or when you get the voter's approval, you go to the banks and bid it. So the district cannot borrow money for a greater period of time than five years without getting voter approval. And because the state of New Jersey public bidding laws dictate how that has to happen, you can't just go and borrow money from the bank, especially for a loan of this size. And once you're going through the process, prevailing wage is a requirement. It doesn't have to be union, but it has to be prevailing wage.
I own a non-union company, and I know when I do prevailing wage, my guys make $30 an hour, non-union. They're making $110 an hour prevailing wage.
Yeah.
So the difference of that money is $10 now.
Huge. Huge. It's huge.
So I was asking that, because I'd like to take some of that other money and use it to fix our fields in the town because our fields are...
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, and I think you've summarized, you know, the delta between what you would build in the private sector because many times when I make these presentations, people think, you know, I just, I've lost my mind when I share the dollar amounts associated with public projects. And it's just, it's just more expensive, and you just, you know, stated the reasons why. So unfortunately, no, it has to be bid prevailing wage, and those statutes... So, unfortunately, no, it has to be bid prevailing wage and those statutes have to be followed.
Okay, so then, do you guys have any plans on fixing any of the fields in town or is that not in town?
In town, town, township.
But what about the school, like Washington School? They don't own that field?
No, we own that field. So, Chris Marcel, our director of buildings, we have shared services meetings where the board meets on a quarterly basis with the townships of West Caldwell and Caldwell. We discuss these things. Chris Marcel, the director of buildings and grounds, we have dumped, I think about like $10,000, right, into the fields?
More, more than that in the field.
Yeah.
We also created the Wilson Field, which didn't even exist before.
Yeah.
So, we spent, spent closer probably over the past three years, over 50,000 dollars fixing the field.
Yeah, so we have, like, as a board, we have really, like, tried to meet the townships halfway with, because they are our fields, but truth be told, it's recreation that does use the fields. So, you know, we're just, we're doing the best we can right now. Like, the, the pride of our fields is really at the high school level, like, not that it's not important that the elementary school fields are upkept, absolutely agree with you, but like, we invest a lot more of our money into the high school athletics because, again, that's the jumping point for many children, as a gateway to college for some of them, right? So, um.
Right, but you should be able to get kids to come to this town. I grew up in Carney and the fields there are nicer than any field around here. And my parents were a thorough bit.
Yeah.
I live here. I'm paying $20,000 a year and field track.
Yeah. I mean, it's an ongoing, obviously, it's an ongoing conversation. We're always trying to find that medium with the townships. Like, they're strapped, we're strapped. We are definitely working together and I do think Chris has made, Chris Marcel, our director of buildings and grounds, has made significant improvements to what they were, to what they are now. I know they're not up to the standards you would love to see them at. We agree, but there's just only so much we can do at this point.
I even figured, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
For coastal, that the town, they have the field and the residents will raise the other half.
I mean, that's a, that's a township question. I can tell you that, I know most of you have probably seen it already, that the township of West Caldwell invested a great amount of money into the Harrison Field. It's absolutely gorgeous and I know that the high school field hockey team was practicing on it today. So, we are very grateful to the township of West Caldwell for what they have done to Harrison Field. It's, it's a wonderful addition to the community and I would just encourage you to go to, I'm not sure if you live in Caldwell or West Caldwell, but it's a shared recreation department and I would just encourage you to contact rec.
Okay. I guess that's my quick question.
If you guys can talk about the new rollout, should the community put this plan, you know, have just going out, I don't want to see that one. Like, I love, tribute to Paul.
Oh, sure.
Is there a real rollout plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're in the process, we're trying to get over the first hurdle so as not to miss the window for the March referendum and that deadline's coming up. And then, this is kind of the first presentation that's being made publicly, but what's gonna happen, once we get past that September deadline, we're gonna sit with the board, there's gonna be a campaign of frequently asked questions, open houses, other meetings where we can answer questions from the community, show them this information so that people know what's coming, when it's coming, and, you know, what they need to do to get out and vote.
Yeah, we are gonna be hiring a public relations firm that's gonna be doing videos, pictures, flyers, postcards. The board is in the works right now to get that person on board. Yeah, and like I said, as we have information, the goal is to advertise it, put it out there and communicate it to you just the way we're doing tonight. This is, this is all we know, what we're sharing with you is all we know. This is what all of these past couple of months of very hard work and a lot of time and effort between the board and Greg, our coaches, our athletic director, our principals has yielded and it's been in a very short amount of time. Greg's firm came on the project very, very late in this game. We've been speaking to you guys about it for over a year, but when I tell you that this man came in only a couple of months ago and produced this, it's a miracle. He literally, like, resurrected this referendum. It was dead. And we are very grateful to Greg and his firm for what they've done here today, for us to be able to sit here today and look at these, these plans, even the formation of the question. It's really, it's, it's really a tribute to you, Greg. We're very, very indebted to you. Anyone else? Yeah? Dr. Conklin?
Thank you for the presentation. Just one question regarding the parking. It looks very limited with the six spaces. And I think we all know the challenges of parking, dropping off our children. You all will forget about it. I mean, it's just disaster. Is there any plans for more parking or is everybody supposed to park down here, walk all the way up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, as you can appreciate, we have limits on the site and if the board decides that they want to try to add more parking, we could bring the parking on to the practice field and add some number of parking spaces, two, four, six, eight. When we do that, we increase something called impervious surface, so that little green rain garden area would have to increase as well. But we try to accommodate some there because right now, there's no real form of parking anyway. So, what's happening over there is facilities is storing some plows and some other stuff. That's gonna be moved to a different part of the site. I think there are, you know, informally, maybe eight or 10 parking spaces when people double park. So, we tried to get as close to formally replicating that as we could because this will be a paved area, so it can be plowed and there's a handicap spot so someone with a disability can access the building or the bleachers because the only other handicap spots are up on the hill and they have to come down that ramp. So, you know, we could increase the parking. It's not gonna be a full high school parking lot, obviously, especially because of the athletic field that's next door that's used, but, you know, if the board chose to, it would add a few dollars, obviously, but, but we could add parking to, to the area. We have a little bit of space there that we could play with, but we tried to accommodate what we could based on the limitations.
Even if it was like a semicircle drop-off zone or something, we could get off the street and back on easily. That's always, is that a challenge?
We can look at that.
Okay, sorry. I just had some voting questions. So, you said March 2025, the vote would go up. So, is that everyone comes to the high school to vote, just like we do?
So, that'll have to be discussed with the bond council. My experience is that wherever you typically vote is probably where it would be, but that's a little bit outside my area of expertise. So, once we get that answer, the, I don't know how many polling places you have now, the bond council will be the one that gives you that guidance. But typically, wherever you would vote in any other election, it'll be the same. It's just that you're voting on this and nothing else.
Okay, and then, so, let's say question two were to be approved. How many years would that incremental tax be charged to?
So, again, a financial question, that's not my area of expertise. I know enough to be dangerous. My understanding from the advisors is that the note is for a 20-year note, similar to a mortgage, and so it would be 20 years. And then, similar to the one you're experiencing now, if the district would have debt rolling off and could do nothing or could look at other projects then. But typically, and I think in this case, they are contemplating a 20-year note.
And it would be the same for West Caldwell and Caldwell residents?
So that, so, no. So, because each community has a different assessed value, so I think the range was 139 to 141. So, one community was 139, one was 141. So, I just used for simplicity, the 140 number. When we get to that point, the financial advisor will have a very detailed breakdown, as will the bond council, so everyone can see everything very specifically, but for simplicity's sake, the numbers I was given, I just put the number in the middle, but I remember one community was 130 to 1, one was 141 because there are different tax bases.
Okay. And then, sorry, I know this is like super.
No, that's okay.
Wait, so what's the number that would have to be for question two and, or question one, right? Is it X number of residents within each community, X percent have to?
So, I, I believe it's the total voter turnout, two communities together, 51 people versus 49. One more person, majority, one more person than not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great, just a clarification on a question.
Sure.
So, is the field house not eligible for, or may not be eligible in debt servicing page where the media rooms will be?
Correct. Our expectation is that the field, so there is something called the Facility Efficiency Standard, the FES, and the state created that document in 2000 and it outlines what in their mind every high school should have. It has general classrooms, it has a gymnasium, it has a cafeteria, it has all these different spaces. And the state created this document because they knew that this grant program, this aid program, was gonna get a lot of applications and they wanted a baseline on which everything would be evaluated. So that if you came to them and said, "We want to build an indoor pool," they would say, "Great, Caldwell, West Caldwell, feel free to build an indoor pool. It is not on the facility efficiency standard. We're not gonna give you any money towards it." So, there are very clearly defined projects that the state deems eligible and then there are other projects that the state deems ineligible. In our experience, the projects that have been outlined in question one are eligible. They are educational, they are building envelope, they are mechanical systems, they are security-related. Those are typically and historically eligible for debt service aid. The field house, which is primarily educa-, uh, athletic, and we're gonna, for the record, we're gonna push for some monies. For example, we're making a non-compliant facility, ADA compliant, barrier-free compliant. We're gonna have handicap accessible bathrooms. So, we want to under-promise and over-deliver and so we're going in with the expectation that they're not gonna give us any money and any money they give us will just further reduce the local share that the community has to pick up.
Are you familiar with the Randolph Field House?
I, I designed the Randolph Field House.
Great. Did you know they received?
They didn't get any.
Anybody, anybody else's questions? We'll be doing a bunch more of these. Can I talk about that a little bit? But expect to see you, Greg, here very often over the next several months.
Can I bring her with me, please?
First question.
Thank you, Greg.
Good thing.
Yes. Yeah, so definitely, so right now, it is 7:04. The field house will be open till 8:00 PM. I strongly encourage you to please take a walk up there and look through it. I don't know if you've ever been in it, but I know that the football coach takes pride in having the boys keep it neat. We're hoping it's extra smelly tonight, Todd. But, but it is really, please go and look at it. We're also, the high school, the next board meeting will be at the middle school. We're hoping Greg will be able to attend and then we're back at the high school in October. We're gonna ask Greg definitely to come back to that one and the field house will be again open in October for people who were not able to come and tour tonight to tour again. And again, please, like, the website will be updated, we'll have a referendum page, we're gonna communicate. I just encourage you, there's two board meetings a month, to please come and stay dialed in and focused. This is our community, this is our kids. Okay? So, thank you so much. Feel free to stay, but also feel free to go to the smelly field house as well. Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks, Kath.
No.
Christmas.
Christmas.
There's no showers. No showers.
All right, we'll let him go. Thank you for, okay.
Yeah, no, no, no showers. The coaches have a shower, but they don't have a shower. It's for emergency purposes.
Okay.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Hey, look at you.
The biggest one, uh, the biggest one that's happened so far, so.
Hey, hey, thanks for taking Avery out like you're third your second door. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I still say so.
Question one, zero.
I thought it was like a completely different thing. I was like, wait, this is. I'm glad. Thank you. Thank you for coming. This is who you're gonna. I were gonna move on with the meeting. We know we lost our, we lost our. We're, we're gonna just move on. Uh, it's a voting meeting. Greg, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, so we'll do, um, we're gonna move on to President's Report, which I don't have much, but I am gonna hand it over to Teri. We do have a policy report from the Policy Committee, so Teri, if you wanna.
Thank you. So, we met on August 19th with Dr. Conklin, Brian McCarthy, myself, and Marisa Landoff Jefferson, and we reviewed and discussed the updates to the Policy and Regulation 5600 and specifically added the following language. Academic issues, i.e. failing one or more classes, shall not be used as the basis for excluding a student from participating in extracurricular activities or events. So, thank you for.
Thanks. Very much. We're, we're gonna clap for you.
Really?
Thank you.
Thank you for, you know, bringing it to our attention, for coming to meetings, for advocating, for meeting with, you know, administration and with principals and discussing these issues with us. So, we appreciate it and we, you know, thank Dr. Conklin and everyone who worked with him as well.
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Conklin for being, having a private meeting with us, with the principal and, or they were only, taking us seriously and listening to us.
My pleasure. Always putting students first, that's the point of what we do here in West Caldwell.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you.
Big difference to all next kids coming up every year, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you both. Really, thank you. Thank you.
So, that was it. Yeah.
That was it. All right, great. Okay, so, now we're gonna go, this is a voting meeting, so we're gonna go pretty quickly, but before we do, I'm gonna say public comment for the end, unless anyone has anything on the agenda, then you can come on up. I'm not gonna go through my whole spiel, Liz, it's already been through. You, you know. We know, we know you'll behave yourself, Liz. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Liz Hart, 149, Rovine. I'm sorry, I missed what you said, sorry, or Misty Martini, pardon me, sorry. Did you say that you can fail one or more classes and participate in extracurricular activities?
Yes, so the exclusion's not based on academics.
So, I could be a student that fail, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, right? So, I could be a student that fails four classes and still be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities, is what this new policy states? Okay.
Yes.
So, as a parent, and I, I have an issue with that because I feel that kids are coming to school to learn and if our kids are failing multiple classes, my point of view is that we should be focusing on those kids to educate, help educate them, provide extra resources for them versus saying, "Hey, you know what? You can fail four classes now and you could still play sports or you could still, you know, hang out with your friends and, you know, enjoy this whatever, extracurricular activity." So, I don't know what kind of message that is sending to our children, that we should no longer be focusing on our education and striving to better ourselves in our academic pursuits versus our non-academic pursuits.
So, it doesn't mean that students aren't gonna receive that support. It means that we won't use that as an exclusionary mechanism so they can't participate in those things. It's our job as educators to make. It's our job as educators to make sure those students are doing those things. And typically, students who may be failing four more classes have other behaviors that are impeding on their ability to pass those courses. But we need to develop a plan to make sure they're successful. So it isn't the fact that they're struggling academically is not the reason to exclude them from participation. If they have behavioral issues, then we have to address those behavior issues that are causing them not to be able to pass those tests. So we don't want to just use the fact that they didn't pass as an exclusionary in itself.
But if they didn't pass a class, right, I would hope that the focus would be, let's try to prevent them from not, not passing the class, right? Let's, let's try to identify this earlier on in the school year, right, to say, "Hey, you know what? John Smith is like, you know, not doing so great and let's, you know, look into how can we reach out to a parent or a guardian or the teacher? Let's provide some extra services before we get to the point where it's the end of the year and potentially they can't participate in some of the fun things, right?"
And all those things are done right now. But we don't want to lose the fact that we've done and done all those things and for some reason or another, the student is still struggling academically and isn't able to pass one of the courses that they should be passing and then exclude them because they are still struggling in that particular academic area. We've done all those things, we've had those plans in place. Everything is done on our end and the child's end to be successful and for some reason or other, they're still not able to pass. We don't want to exclude them just because of their academic struggles.
So what is the incent, sorry, and I apologize if I'm going long. What is the incentive of the child, then, to, to pass?
Why would a student want to pass? They'd want to pass because they want to pass.
No, I know, no, I'm just saying, like, if I'm a child, like, what is my incentive that, or not even incentive, right? So I, I just feel like we're just setting the bar low for our students. That is just slightly disappointing to me, I'm sorry.
Well, the bar isn't set low for them. The idea is like the, the adults, the teachers, the guidance councils, the administration have to develop a plan to make sure that student isn't failing.
Right.
And then include the parents and include other people in the school to make sure that student has received the support. If we do all those things, then the hope is that student will pass. If there's something impeding their ability to pass, whatever that is, and for some reason they still don't pass the class, for whatever reason that is, then we don't want to exclude them from things that they would typically have access to. It's not about setting the bar low and saying, "Well, you chose not to do all the work that you should have done, so you're failing." That's a behavioral issue beyond the fact that they failed. They're refusing to do work, they're being insubordinate, whatever that is, that's their behavioral things also impeding their ability to perform in school. That could be addressed as well, but just the academic piece, excluding them solely based on that is not something that we want to do.
So, Judge, can I jump in? Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. I don't know, they've been following because... No, so I'm just going to jump in, I don't mean to, to, but just to, so the goal of the policy, Liz, here is that if a student is trying and working their hardest and the administration and everyone is with them and they still, for whatever it is, maybe it's a learning issue, maybe it's a home issue, right? It could be a language barrier, okay? Something that's coming up that is really impeding them from being successful, right? That they wouldn't be penalized for, for, from participating, wouldn't be excluded from those events. Now, to Dr., what Dr. Conklin's trying to say is if the child is defiant, like, pfft, pfft, pfft. Right. No, then that's behavioral, that's not academic, because they already have all the academic tools to succeed. It's a behavioral issue, then that's something different that would be addressed with the child in that situation. That would prohibit, that would prohibit a child from participating. But if a child is making all of the efforts and even after all those efforts from the school, from the home, from the child are still not yielding a certain result, we don't want a child to feel alienated, you know what I mean? Because now it's like, to your point, like, behaviorally, if somebody's defiant, that's behavioral, that's not academic. That would impede them from, from participating. Right. But then, to that point, right, so if, if, let's say they have an IEP or there's extra services that are required, right? Like, are there things within the district that, let's say, let's say if they were like in, like, um, like, what do you call it? Like the fast-track math, right? And then they were struggling and they were trying hard and blah, 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 and they were failing, or like, you know, getting failing grades and there was interventions by the teacher and the student and blah, blah, blah. And then, you know, even though this is not part of the normal course, maybe they were put back into like a regular track versus the fast-track for math, right? Like something as a preventative measure to prevent them from getting that failing grade. So that's what I don't understand, right? Because I don't know if the policy states that you can get an F after trying your hardest and all of these different resources, you know, um, working together to prevent the, the failing grade. For whatever reason, unfortunately, the child is still failing and not able to meet the standards of that class for more than one class, which seems like a lot, but again, okay, fine, for whatever, you know, whatever the scenario may be, but then yet you're still allowed to, let's say, play football, be in, you know, music or, you know, whatever, whatever it may be. Like, I just feel like we're not focusing on the true, um, issue at hand, which is the actual education of the child.
I think each situation's unique and some situations, we come into this more frequently and this is one of the focuses of this policy change, students sometimes will struggle at the beginning of the year or make bad choices at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And now they're in a situation where they do turn around and they are making those efforts, but because of the failures at the beginning of the year, there's no opportunity for them. So you're actually defeating what you're trying to do by letting them know, if you do this work, there's probably not an opportunity to make up the difference in the grade, but that will be taken into account and it will be held against you even though you're not going to get a passing grade because now you are making F, you are doing all those things and you are, so again, the, the change in policy is just for that. It probably last year affected three students that could have been participating in things that they didn't get to participate in because they didn't pass the classes, even though at the end they were making all the efforts to do that, they had put themselves in such a situation that they couldn't do it. We also have students that transfer in, that are transferring in with failing grades from whatever school they're in and they are making the effort here, they are making those, but they still can't change that 50, 50, 50. They could get 100 in both classes and still not be able to get a passing grade.
But you will.
So those students aren't excluded.
You'll get a pa, you would get a passing grade if you got, you know, a slightly better grade than an F, like a 50 plus 50 plus a, you know, a 60 and a 60 still gets you passing.
Not if you...
No?
No.
Or 55 or whatever, you know what I mean? So I...
It depends on weight, yeah, it would depend on the weight of like what the...
Of the grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Homework, is it a, is it a, um, yeah. Is it a formative assessment, you know?
We're not devaluing the idea of students have to perform academically, but we're not going to use that as a, a single factor in saying they're excluded from whatever extracurricular activities they're participating in. That might be the only thing that can certainly engage them in school. So we're going to take that away because they're struggling academically?
I mean, the, what the policy reads is it shall not be used as the basis.
Right.
It doesn't mean that, it, it means that that's not going to be the only thing that excludes them, right? There could be other things. That's how the policy reads.
Yes.
Academic issues, i.e. failing one or more classes, shall not be used as the basis for excluding students. To me, that then puts it at the discretion of the building administrator. Okay. Right, to say like, this is a good kid that tries, yet he's in a single, or she's in a single-family home, is alone most of the time, doesn't have a lot of guidance, has trouble getting to school on time. Like, there could be other things that are preventing that student, who we have to remember is a child, right? Sometimes like, I, and this is not you, Liz, I am just directing at myself, like self-reflectively, I am a member of a two-parent home, right? Like, we are working parents, but like, there is always somebody around my house for my children. We have to be cognizant of the fact that we are living in a changing community and there are a lot of families in our community where children are home a lot of the time and maybe they're in eighth grade, but they're still kids. They're still kids, they're what, 14 years old? So sometimes they're unsupervised, right? We are also living, we've seen our ESL population triple in the past couple of years. So, you know, that's also, there's language barriers communicating with parents. The district has taken a lot of measures to meet parents halfway, right? Especially with the ESL population. And we're doing, every year we look to do that more and more, right, to, to draw them in. But sometimes it's those vulnerable students that are victims of something like this, right? And what the real, the thing is, is really kind of making it more at the discretion of the principal, instead of it, this is the, it's a hard line, right? Blurring the lines a little bit for kids like that that may be getting lost in the cracks. Okay. And I appreciate that, Julianne, the clarification of that. Yeah. And I just, and I know that the board has been like super helpful as far as like, in instances like that, like making sure that they're reaching out to, you know, students across the community, depending on whether, you know, my child just comes from a single-family household too, right? So like my niece is there in Verona, same thing, and, you know, I could argue the same thing where they had zero guidance, right? And yet they, one flourished and the other one didn't, right? So, um, but all I was saying, or what I was trying to impress was that I would hope that the focus would be to try to help educate and like, you know, empower the child... Yes. To get bet, you know, do better, have better grades or whatever it is, right? Because that's empowering for the child in and of itself, right? A thousand percent. You know, like, um... And we just, like, we just applied for this, um, this, this, this high-impact tutoring grant that really targets our ESL population and gives them tutoring and access. So really, like, this is something that's just meant to, like I said to you, not take such a hard line with some of these vulnerable students, right? But behind the scenes, we're still committed to academically pushing them to be where we know they can be and they should be, they deserve to be, right? So it's not meant, I understand your point, Liz, and totally, we appreciate it as a board, absolutely, but the goal of this change was really not to lower the bar, it was to make the bar more accessible, if that, if that's helpful. And, and, and a lot of times, like I said, like, these kids feel excluded from things, right? There's a lot of things that make them feel excluded. We don't want them to feel excluded, right? It's our, it's our job to make them feel like they're a part of something. They often are on the outskirts and, and we know that. We live in a small community, there's wonderful benefits to that. Wonderful, wonderful things. I love this community, I wouldn't want to live anyplace else in America. But when you move into it and then you have things that prevent you, right? It's difficult, it's difficult. So this is just a means of just trying to make them feel part of it, right? To, to keep them anchored to it. Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I know it's a long time talking. No, it's fine, that's what, it's fine, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Hi. Madeline Brown, 13 Burgundy Road. Um, I appreciate that you, um, just clarified the wording on that because I was ready to ask the same question and I do, I just kind of wanted to let you know that Liz isn't alone in the community in her, in her concerns because this is really the first time we're hearing the, the new, the new policy.
Sure.
Um, most of you know I'm an educator myself in a community where 70 to 80% at least of my students are ELLs. So, um, I also have the kids that come to me and say, "Oh, I didn't have time to do my homework, I was at this, I was at that." And I, I just think, and again, I'm glad that you reiterated that it's not the only thing, but, you know, it's, it's our job as educators to get them the services. I know that people fight for special education services and it really sounds like this could be used as a way to avoid giving the services that students might need. And I just really want to make sure that the district is, is held accountable for what it needs to do and parents as well. Parents need to understand, like Liz was saying, that we're here for academics and I just feel more and more as we're talking about a 14 to 16 million dollar field house while the middle school's not in the best shape, we need to remember that we're here for academics first. And my kid's an athlete too. And my kid's in music and I, we embrace everything that the district has to offer. But academics need to come first. So when we're making allowances for things that maybe are within our control, I think we need to keep that in mind as well. So, it's just, yeah, my two cents.
No, no, so appreciate it. And I just want to clarify, cause, just to make sure it's very clear, that when we first, just going to the referendum, when we first told the community we were going to explore a referendum, the referendum was going to be a field house. That was going to be the referendum with some steam labs. That was the focus of the board. When we brought Greg's architectural firm on and he went through a thorough analysis of every building, the state of the middle school is what brought us to two questions on the referendum. What knocked the field house to a tax impact and prioritized not only the educational spaces, but the safety and security of the buildings. And the middle school's facade, the middle school's heating and return system is 100 years old. If it fails, we will lose the middle school. I am going to be very clear about that. If we do not pass question one as a community and those heat, we do not have, you're talking tens of millions of dollars. If we do not pass question one and those pipes break in that middle school, okay? We will lose the building. There will be no middle school, okay? So the board, and I just have to defend us for this, man, I don't usually get like this, but I do have to clarify for, no, and not against you, Madeline.
I appreciate that you separated them out a lot.
Yeah, so the reason why we separated them out was to say, the academic success of the school, the high school is the diamond of the district. It's time that the high school got its due. It's time the high school got a renovated science wing. It's time the high school had more opportunities for children who cannot go to college or want to go to college for architectural design or engineering or anything like that. It's time for that for the high school. But the middle school, this is simply to preserve and protect a building that is near and dear, that was the high school at one point in this community. We have to protect it. That is why the board, Greg, said to the board, "Listen to me, you will never have enough capital reserve to fix that middle school." That's a priority. And the board said, "Great, great, guess what? Now the field house is a question to tax impact and the community can decide if they want to do that and take on that burden." But as a community, as a board, we are saying, the priority of this district is academics, safety, and security. It's our infrastructure.
And you know what? I should have come up here because I did text my husband, who's not here, and said, "I'm really pleased," because I didn't know what I was walking into when I came tonight.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate that. And I texted Andy and I should have said that first. I do and I think everybody appreciates that you separated them out and made them two different issues so that we can focus on the needs versus the wants. I think that's great.
Yeah, it's, that was very important to us, right? There's a need that costs us nothing and then there's a want. And is the field house a little bit of, of a need too? Yeah, if you go look at it, it is. I mean, it's not, first of all, are female athletes, I'm going to tell you, it, it's disgusting. They don't have any access to anything. We are not Title IX compliant up in that field test, there's no way to be. There's no way to be as it exists now. It's not fair, we deserve better. The gentleman over here, Mr. Bender, was talking about fields. He's absolutely right, but guess what? I'm more interested in a building that is up to code, up to complacency, like, that is something that our kids can feel proud of. And there will be AP testing taken on there and there will be room for professional development and there will be that multipurpose area, yeah, it's the length of two wrestling mats, but it can be used for multi, it's a community space, right? It's a multipurpose space. But we did separate it out for that reason. We could not, the five of us sat in a room and said, we could not close our eyes at night knowing the state of the middle school and put that field house up first. We couldn't. So it's really up to the community to decide, you know? Want and need, need and want, like, right? Like, what are we going to do? But I cannot be strong enough to say that question one, it, it has to pass. It, it, it is, it is detrimental, it has to pass. Yeah.
Julianne, okay, so Dr. Conklin, something with this too. I believe Dr. Conklin, correct me if I'm wrong, please, one of the things we discussed as well was that making sure, um, policies like in the middle school and the high school were in line with one another as well and that there was no discrepancy between how we addressed, um, students being able to participate in activities.
Right, the students at the high school were never excluded for failing a grade, so we wanted to make sure the middle school was aligned with the high school. So that's really what kind of brought about that change in the policy?
Yeah, well, you know, let me, let, let, and then...
Hello, Michelle Coro, 18 Eastern Parkway. Just a quick follow-up question to that. So will, the policy you read is the board policy, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then the middle school will revise their policy too, or is that...
The middle school doesn't have a policy, it just has a code of conduct.
The code of conduct.
And the code of conduct's already revised.
Oh, it is revised.
Yep, it already says, um, student in good standing and because the policy says they cannot be excluded because of a failing grade, that's excluded from that.
Okay. So that code of conduct's available online or...
Uh, I don't know if they shared it.
Not yet, okay, but it'll be for the next school year.
They used to share it the first week of school, it might be.
I think when you do your forms, I think when you do your forms, you got to read through it, the code of conduct.
If you're at the middle school, you have to kind of click on something in the Google.
Well, thank goodness I'm past that, but I still want to read it, so thank you.
Absolutely, that's the one that was already changed.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right, yeah. And again, I just wanted to say thank you to the board. Um, I think this is really impactful and no child in middle school should be excluded impactful, and no child in middle school should be excluded from going to a dance or, um, going to their field trip because they're struggling with a class, I just wanted that on the record, that we really appreciate your understanding concern and how important developmentally that is for these kids that are still developing, so appreciate your, uh, your time.
Liz, you want to come back on? Yeah, go ahead. See, everybody left and missed all these like meaningful conversations, like, come on.
Okay, Liz Hart, one forty-nine Verona. I did want to highlight the fact that I saw and tapped into that our standings at the high school did improve, so I just kind of want to kudos to everyone here.
Fifty, you went up fifty, from one thirty-six to eighty-six.
I know, it's amazing, we're ranked number eight in Essex County for high school, so that, or, oh, seven, sorry, apologize.
Who's counting?
Seven, we're top ten, so that's great. So that was, that's really the thing that I want to stress too, right? Obviously is like, we should be focusing on academic integrity and holding our kids to a higher standard. Um, I feel like the work that you all are doing as a board is contributing to that, so thank you, I mean, it, it, I was, I'm not going to lie, I was shocked, I was like, oh my gosh, this is amazing, I can't believe that, that our school ranking is so high, so I just wanted to put that on record as well.
Well, I just want to give kudos to the administration at the high school and all the teachers, and the middle school, because the kids at the middle school are coming to the high school and they're coming prepared to be successful, so.
Yes.
That's ultimately the goal, so.
Absolutely, so, yeah, so obviously, yeah, to the board, to teachers, administration, thank you to principals also, so thank you.
Yes, thanks Liz, thank you. No, we know that, and you know that, like, uh, some scores that you know were very data-driven here in this district, right? Like, so that's always going to be the utmost importance, but we just don't want to lose sight of especially at such a developmentally sensitive time at GCMS, is that, you know, we just want to make sure that kids feel, there has to be something for their self-esteem as well. And to Teri's point, which I totally forgot about it, we are really just aligning it to what the expectations are at the high school, so. Anybody else? Anything on the agenda? If it's off the agenda, I'll give you time at the end, off the agenda, okay, I promise you can come, I promise, promise. We're just going to move through and vote very quickly, okay? Um, okay, so, let's move to our votes, we'll start with curriculum and technology.
Approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Brian, sorry. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
And can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Steve Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindofe Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Dianbola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero motion carry.
Great, we'll move on to curriculum and technology.
Okay. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through J under curriculum and technology on this evening's agenda.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, what, can you take the roll?
Yes, uh, Ms. Steve Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindofe Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Dianbola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero motion carry.
Okay, personnel?
Uh, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through N under certificated staff, and items A through C under not certificated staff and personnel on this evening's agenda.
And can we have a second?
I'll have a second.
Okay, and Brian, the roll, please.
Yes, uh, Ms. Steve Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindofe Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Dianbola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero motion carry.
Okay, finance and facilities?
All right, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through H under finance, and item A under facilities on this evening's agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian, when you're ready.
Yes, Ms. Steve Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindofe Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Dianbola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero motion carry.
And finally, policy?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve item A and B under policy on this evening's agenda.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Brian, whenever you're ready.
Yes, Ms. Steve Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindofe Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Dianbola?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero motion carry.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on anything off the agenda. Public participation shall be governed by the following, participant must be recognized by the presiding officer, must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address, and you can start going up, it's okay, I'm just gonna, I have to, I have to re, I have to read it, it's part of our thing. Uh, statements are to be limited to three minutes duration, but Anne, you can speak as long as you need to, participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of a meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into question and answer across examination between the public and individual members, be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening, boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional info, or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time, or are objectively obscene, participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slander statements made during public comment. Poor Anne, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Anne Manjona, I live on Small Avenue. I actually already brought this up, um, with, um, Mr. Bertolo and, um, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, about the sixth grade, um, advanced placement test.
Oh, okay.
They take this test after school. I brought it to the attention, I didn't really think that that was the best time to take a test, at three to four o'clock for numerous reasons. One is that there's no crossing guards when the kids are going to get done with a test. So Mr. Bertolo said, well, maybe we could do it in the morning, I'm like, but there's still not going to be crossing guards if you have it real early in the morning. And the kids aren't really going to be focused like at three o'clock either, I'm thinking like, I'm a teacher, at the end of the day, I'm like, you know, fried up by then. I just don't think, luckily, my son is pretty focused, but I'm thinking about like a student that maybe has ADHD and they're taking this test at three o'clock, I know they can make alter arrangements supposedly, but I just don't think that parents might not even think to do that, or, I have a friend like whose daughter just didn't want to mess up her after-school schedule, and like just decided not to take it, just because she didn't want to do it after school. So I just, like in my school district, the kids just take it during the school day. So I really, and then he's, he said that he spoke to the su, the supervisor of math, Jamil, Ms. Buddin, I don't know if I pronounced that right, which actually was my professor at Montclair State for my middle school, my master's in math for middle school, I'm surprised he would, I don't know, I just was like, didn't think that he would agree with that, because I just think that kids are not focused at three o'clock.
Well, af- after we met, that, I know that we had a conversation about exploring other options for the students to take the test, whether that's during the day, during lunch, or some other options, um, if they're not interested in taking it after school, so we want to make multiple options for students to take the test this school year.
Okay. I just think, like, people aren't really going to, like, I'm like very proactive, like, I don't want my kid crossing Bluefield Avenue without a crossing guard, he's only in sixth grade, but I don't really think like there's a lot of, I don't think every parent out there is like me, I don't want to re, and my kid's already taking the test, he's in the program, I'm not even here for my kid, I'm here, like, I don't want to read that some kid got hit by a car on Bluefield Avenue because there was no crossing guards taking a test. It, it's like, it was, it's upsetting to me, it, I know it seems trivial, but, and people, other people are probably upset, but they're not going to take the time to come. Um, I don't know if people are really going to make like special arrangements either, like, I could have made a special arrangement supposedly, he said, but I just, I don't agree with taking it before or after school, I don't. It should be taken during the school day, people are not going to make arrangements, they're so busy, single mothers, two working families, whose parent's sick, they're not, they're not going to be thinking about that. The test should be given during the school day. That's, that's my opinion, and I strongly firmly believe that. I'm surprised there's no one else who brought this up to anyone's attention. The second thing I, I brought up to him was a chess club, which now I was thinking about checkers, because maybe chess is hard. And I know it's all great, but some kids are really not like going to be athletes, and my son is just a recreational type of student. And I mentioned this to Mr. Bertolo about clubs, and he was just like, well, they can meet after school and play in the library. I really think that should be a club that could be added, I, I, like, I was taking my son to Roseland Library for, to play chess with strangers, that, he seemed to go a few times, he enjoyed it. I think that that would be a good club to add, but I don't really think he entertained me, like, he didn't really, it was, I don't really think he heard me very well, at all. Um, I'm not sure if this was talked about, because I came in a little late, um, it, about the security in the middle school, was that added in?
To the referendum?
So, yeah, I, I missed it.
Yeah, so they're going to be doing some upgrades to the, um, to the entrance, like a security vestibule.
Oh, that's great, because like at my school, even if we don't, I know that we don't have a lot of police on staff, maybe we can think about getting SRO, police officers, or at least at my, one of the middle schools I teach at, they have like in the office, I think they actually, someone like donated it, or they raised, I think that maybe the , the parent association at the one middle school, because I go between two middle schools in this, the town I work in, they actually can see in the office, like, all the doorways.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, and, and they, we have SRO cops as well, but the one school actually, they have the whole, and you could see all the different doors and what's going, so the secretaries, everyone's in and out of that, you know, that main office, and you could see everything that's going on, so that's a good thing that I had brought up. And recently, I have a friend who was asking me how my son gets to school, and I said, you know, my son walks to the middle school, and so I think that they might buddy up to walk, and she was, you know, she's like, well, two days a week, you know, I can't drive my son, and I said, I said, the, the concern really is going to be high school, I said to my girlfriend, uh, that I actually went to high school with. So again, there is, like, she's a single mom, I don't know really where her parents are at, but there really is a need for, bu, I don't, more so I'm thinking, but I don't know how far everyone else is, I just know from my, where my house is mileage, but there really is a need for busing for people who live over two miles from a school. I mean, I, I feel like, and her child has, like, I'm not sure what exactly, because he went to Harrison, I didn't really want to ask her, but I'm going to try to have my son walk with him, because I'm concerned now that, you know, that the, the student's going to be, he has to walk two days, and he's not, you know, he has a little bit of difficulties, whatever there are. So on top of that, she's a single mom, and I said to her, this is, you're even further than me than, you know, from small versus more cheese in Caldwell, it's going to be, I don't know how these kids are going to get to school, it's really something to consider, I, you know, I don't, I'm not babying my kid, he's got to walk to school, he walks home, I'm like, this year, you're packing your lunch, I do not baby my son, but I really honestly don't know how my son is getting to school in ninth grade. I really don't. So, these are, you know, we're talking about a field, I'll even pay, I don't care, if it's, you know, it's not really like money per se, I mean, if they have to charge the parents for a bus, then so be it. I mean, if you can pay for your kid to get these sneakers and all these things that people buy their kids, then I'll pay for a bus. That's about it.
Okay.
I wanted to say, I hope we do pass that, the, the middle school is beautiful, when I walked in, I was like, it's, but I really, that's very concerning that, that it's that bad and cheap, it's.
It's just old, it's, and we have a wonderful custodial staff, and they keep the building immaculate, but it's the things that you don't see, that's what's, that are the most definitely.
Yeah, I know, that's like my house, I fix everything you can't see on it.
Yes, right, exactly.
This school is beautiful, but that, that's concerning, so I will be out voting yes for everything.
Yeah, we're going to let Dr. Conklin address some of your stuff, Anne, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So in terms of the chess club, um, we, the board actually updated the teacher contract this year, so new clubs can be created at the middle school, if students are interested, if your son's interested, that's usually the process, three or four students get together, approach a teacher, or the teacher approaches Mr. Bertolo, then they can put a chess club together, it takes a few years, but eventually that would be a paid club, based on the updated contract, so that's a good thing, if we want to have the chess club up and running. I know they already have like a game board club, so maybe they can incorporate it together, um, so that's.
Oh, look more closely, I didn't, I mean, that was so long ago, the list.
And in terms of busing, we send out a survey every year, I think Brian has it set to go out this Wednesday.
I wish it would go, I wish it would pass.
About, um, transportation, and it usually would be subscription busing, the rules are real specific about how, when the district has to provide busing in terms of mileage, but we do send that survey out every year, and it's going, I think it's going to go out on Wednesday, so you answer yes to that, the more people who answer yes, the more possible, possible it is, the problem is we don't have enough students, based on the cost of a route, it would be cost prohibitive for parents to even do it, it would cost them so much money, it's really not worth it, it would be cheaper to get, hire an Uber, it's the, it's just that the cost of transportation is very high, so, but that survey is going to go out Wednesday, so look for that survey.
Okay, thank you for your time.
I think I got them all, right?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I haven't been here since all-day kindergarten, but like, even like, I, I didn't come to those meetings, but I saw you, and I'm like, I just think there's things at the middle school that could be improved, like, I just, the transition, I mean, I love that, the teachers were all great and very responsive, it's just, like, you know, safety and security and, you know, that, I mean, you have to take kids per kid, you can't really have a hard line, because every situation is so different to exclude someone, or, it's really like a hard thing to have just a concrete line, it has to be really the whole system of what's going on with the child to, whether they are going to participate or not. But I was like heartbroken when I saw you up there, and I, I wish I could have been here, but I wasn't. But that all, I, I thank you for coming for about that, because that's a very hard when you have a student like that, and to be excluded, I mean, it's one thing if they just don't care, but it didn't seem that was the case from Rochelle. Thank you and have a great night.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Anne, you're welcome. Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to ask if there, just something for you guys to think about when you're talking, I don't need an answer tonight, but if, if there's any way I can help with the stuff we were talking about, about getting the info out there for the underprivileged students who are entitled to get something paid for, um, because I'm finding out more and more about that with the one student I'm involved with, and I did mention like the physical, he almost didn't play a sport because he didn't know, and his mother didn't know that he can go to the urgent care and get a physical, because they didn't have insurance. So I dug around, and I, I found that out, and they did it. Uh, Mr. Bertolo told us that, uh, in our meeting, that they offer a hotspot for tho, to those who don't have internet, which is wonderful. This student I know went through middle school for three years, and didn't have internet for a couple of them, and they had no idea they could get a hotspot, I don't know why, they, they are very proud people, they probably never told, he probably never told his counselor, um, again, mom has a language barrier, but he might not have failed if he had internet. Um, so I, a way to get the information out there, um, I just bought his Class of Twenty Twenty-eight t-shirt, because it was easier to pay for it than to try to figure out how to get it, and then get, you know, have him not have to pay for it. Um, what else?[1665.73] Um, what else? So, they are embarrassed to ask, to have to go, I've spoken now personally, since we talked, I have spoken personally to someone in that situation, they are embarrassed to ask for it, to call and, and say, "How do I go about this?" Or, so, if there's anything I can do, I don't want to just say, "Here, you guys fix this." If there's anything I can do, if you think of anything, and, um, I, I'm perfectly willing to try, try to come up with something or anything you need in that regard to help get the info out there and so they know what they can get and get the stuff to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, thank you. Um, anybody else? Can I, nobody? Okay, so our next meeting is September, let's go.
September twenty-third, Monday.
September twenty-third, okay, it's going to be at GCMS, so it's the twenty-third and the thirtieth. The goal is to have Greg back. The other goal is to have Greg be at the open houses, um, at each school's open houses, he won't be doing present, formal presentations, but to be there for questions and then really want him back here in October so we can open the field house again. And hopefully by October, November, we'll have figures from the Department of Education, so that'll enable us. The other thing I just also want to mention, because we're still filming and for you to